All right, gang. You guys all ready to roll? Everybody good? Okay. All right, let's bring the meeting for October 9th to order. Thank you all for being here. Thank you all for being out there in the public. Do roll call first. Steve Ball, Phoebe Benziger, Chad Huffman, Delphine Jotto, Richard Rogers, Ronald Cairns, and I'm David Fisher, and I'm here. It's nice we've got everybody here for the first time in a minute, so, cool. Approval of the minutes from the 25th. Everybody get a chance to look at them. Any issues? No? No? Okay. In that case, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'm making a motion to approve.
Thank you, Delphine. Who seconded it down there? Ron? All right, thanks, Ron. All those in favor? All right. All those opposed? Okay, minutes are approved. Staff, William, any additions or deletions?
Nope.
Okay. In that case, we've got two agenda items. First is the Seasons subdivision, and second will be the conditional use permit for the RV park.
All right. Before I start, you might notice Scott is not here, and I don't know if all of you know Ryan. He's not a new employee, but this is a... Your title's Deputy City Engineer, right? So, Deputy City Engineer, standing in for Scott today, so, thanks for being here.
Awesome. Thanks, Ryan, for being here, yeah.
Yeah, welcome.
So, anyway, to start, this is a subdivision application proposing to continue the... Developing the undeveloped portions of the Seasons subdivision at the end of Oregon Street. This is really a continuation of the existing development. Preliminary plaits do expire after five years, so the previous preliminary plat does need to get renewed in order to continue development. This is located on Outlet A of the Oregon Street South Boundary Line Adjustment, and is approximately 3.76 acres in size. The property's zoned R3A Medium High Density District, and this is a proposal for 25 residential units consisting of duplex, triplex, and sixplex construction. The zoning does allow for multifamily development, and in theory, the developer could put in a 56-unit apartment building as a use by right, but they're obviously not opting for that. One thing I will note, this is also within the Seasons subdivision's second amended preliminary plat/PD plan, which was recorded at reception number 798375 back in 2009. That permits some deviations, including the zero-foot side setbacks for residential lots, allowing townhouses to be individually conveyable, such as the existing townhouses already are, though with the caveat that individual buildings do need to be separated by at least 10 feet. And then garages have a minimum 20-foot front setback. And then, as you know, with a PD, that also allows the developer to shift density, though the overall density requirements must still be met. That allows for some of the small lot sizes that you see on the plat, and I will show that in a minute, but as I said, the overall density still can't go above what is permitted by zoning. For the public's knowledge of the subdivision process, this is a preliminary plat. Preliminary plaits are valid for five years because codes change and requirements do change, so once a preliminary plat has gone beyond that five-year expiration date, the developer has to come back with an amended preliminary plat, even if it is the same as what was previously approved. This plat is presented to both Planning Commission and City Council, and this is what permits the developer to begin infrastructure improvements, namely roads, water, sewer, et cetera. Eventually, they will need to present a final plat to City Council to formally create lots that can be individually sold. With all subdivision proposals, we do have a few criteria that we look to, one being conformance with the master plan and zoning regulations, as well as any regulations from an underlying... underlying plan development. We also look at the relationship of the development to topography, soils, drainage, flooding, and other physical characteristics, the availability of water, sewer, stormwater drainage, compatibility with wildlife and vegetation, adjacent streets and traffic flow, including pedestrian traffic, the availability of fire, police, and emergency services protections, and impacts on area schools. This area is shown as residential mixed density medium in the future land use map, indicating that the area is appropriate for a variety of residential types, including single-family homes, townhomes, duplexes, and triplexes. As said, the property is zoned R3A Medium High Density District, which allows single-family, duplex, or multifamily residential development as a use by right. The surrounding areas zoned R2 Low Density District and R4 High Density District. And then here's the plat itself. For the public, I know these can be hard to read, but they are available online in tonight's packet, and they're easier to see there. This first page mainly consists of plat notes and signature lines that we require on all the plaits here in Montrose, and then the second page shows the actual proposed subdivision itself. As you can see, some of the lots are very narrow and long. That's because these are proposed townhome developments split up so that they're individually conveyable, and as mentioned, this is within a PD, so density can be shifted. This proposes 25 units and dedication of rights of way as required. The northern portion is shown as an outlot for future development. Staff does find that the preliminary plats in compliance with the subdivision regulations' comprehensive plan and the Seasons subdivision's second amended preliminary plat/PD plan. The proposal meets the intent of the R3A Medium High Density zoning district. Staff recommends the conditional approval of this plat with the standard condition we recommend for all preliminary plaits, as shown on the screen. And with that, I would turn it over. Dean McCall is here as the applicant. If you'd like to say anything, feel free.
Okay. Hi, everybody. Dean McCall, 237 Elk Mountain Drive, Redstone, Colorado. Just give you a little feedback of where we're at with this. Justin's here, he's one of my partners with us, too. So, it's Wes and I. We've also got Star Court that's going. So, on that, that you saw that the smaller lots are, we're moving to those two-story townhomes that we're building over in Star Court. The one caveat to that is, the second story will have an outside balcony that will overlook the cemetery, so that those that can have that will be able to see a cemetery view. Pricewise, we haven't sold anything over in Star Court. This gives some affordable housing that will come into the community. Price point will be below 400 is what we're expecting, unless a lot of things change, it'll be about 1,250 square feet. Same footprint as what we've been building over there, same design. Rental-wise, for those over in Star Court, they've been renting, and I think there's a demand and a need to be able to fit that under $400,000 market. The other reason that we shifted to this type of a design was, as you can see on there, I can only build on one side of the road. So, infrastructure costs were unrealistic to try to make it viable, to put in a city road and only be able to build on one side unless I could go two stories. I didn't feel like the market, and it was the best interest of the community, to build something similar to what was done in Seasons at the very beginning, where you first come in, that face on the west side. They're about 2,000 square feet, two stories. Price point on those, you know, by the time I get into that to market it and be able to sell it, you're talking almost 600,000. So, we went from the market to say, who do we want to be in there, and what do we want to have occur, why that change in transition does around the corner. The other challenge to that in making our decision was our neighbor, who came and is going to do, I think, 192 units that he was approved for, for that land over there, which is R4. He's already got designs, I believe, for what he proposed of a bunch of apartment complexes. If I go around that corner and I stay with the same townhome design, it's going to be hard-pressed for someone to spend about a half a million dollars when we come to the market, and your neighbor be sitting right there looking at with a high-density housing that could be the affordable housing or whatever. I mean, it's just that market of what I'm trying to make sure. The other reason I didn't do a full plat of trying to go all the way out to that outlot is dependent about what's going to occur over there, right? I don't want to overextend myself. That's the way we've built, all the way through all of this. Everything I've been involved with in this community is, I don't go for the home run. I go into it a little bit, test water, see where we're at, modify, and then I chunk away a few other things. Just trying to be diligent. My goal isn't to... You know, I've got to make a margin, but I want to deliver something to this community that meets a need. That should explain the townhome designs and why we did a transition. We're working with Seasons HOA. It's still up in the air and open of where things fit with all that. I know Mary's here tonight, and they're probably going to have some questions and try to do it. So, depending on where that goes, because there's a variable that goes, all right, if you've got a one-car garage, what's your price point for the HOA versus everybody that's got a two-car garage, and snow removal and everything else? So, there's some things in there that's just got to be worked through. Size of yards, rates, everything. The other piece to that is, you see seven of the ones similar to what we've built. We have five of those seven already spoken for, that people are willing to wait. We went over to Star Court. I could have continued on this, and there's always been that demand for these, because it's met a really nice niche for the community. But we chose to do Star Court because we needed to help our labor force, and that's where we moved to. Hopefully, that gives you a good idea of why I'm proposing what I'm proposing, why everything's not totally included in this to be incremental, why there's seven of the townhomes similar, and why the transitional change. I really do believe that second-story balcony out the back with two master suites upstairs will be beneficial for some affordable housing for our community. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Dean. You want to stay up there just a second, in case anybody has questions for you?
I'm sorry.
You've got any questions?
I'll let somebody else go first.
Yes. Go ahead, Phoebe. Or Ron, actually, Ron, if you're ready, go ahead.
Yeah, I bet I know what your question is, Chad. So, just, I'll let you wait for that one. So, anyway, it's just a comment.
Yes.
And all the time, and I haven't been on the Planning Commission forever, but quite a while, I've never had a developer come in and give us such a good thought-out plan. And they say it's affordable housing, but then, you know, really, what's affordable? It sounds like you're very cognizant to make that work. So, thank you for that, and thanks for the honesty and just throwing it out there. So, yeah, good job, Dean. It's good to see you, too.
Thanks, Phoebe.
Mine's easy. I'm not that familiar with Montrose yet. Where's Star Court?
Where's Star Court? Star Court's the drive-in over there. So, we... I own that with a different group, and we're building those over there.
Right down the street from the...
The medical complex, Surgery Center, Black Canyon, yes. That's what will be built over there in the sixplex design. And if we can, on the sides, if there's space, depending on the allowance and everything for it, because there are going to be deep backyards in some of those corners, we may put a third bedroom in there because it is a big need for some of those things. We're just trying to see, what does the community tell us that they need?
You made a statement, and I only caught half of it. So, tell me again, you said you've already got some pre-sold or pre-reserved, and I'm very curious...
Nothing on paper, technically, but I've been approached by four people, so I'm not counting them all. One that says, "Look, I want to take out a triplex," and then the others are like, "Hey, I want a unit, so I'm being reserved and staying five, conservative." That's just how I am.
And are they looking to want to reserve those... these skinny two stories, or are they looking to reserve something else?
The current ones.
I see.
Because no one is even aware of this existing yet.
I see.
I have not put anything out there because I don't... Once it starts, you know, it's going to be relentless, because these are under 400,000 is what we're planning. You know, for someone to have two master suites and an upstairs balcony overlooking the cemetery and a decent backyard, you know, a garage and everything, it's... I've talked to some realtors, and they're saying, "Just let me know when I can say something."
Sure. Well, that's a great... You said garage, so that's a great transition to my next question. How long is the parking places in front of these units? The driveway? Thank you.
So, you've got a 20-foot minimum depth of that. You've got the one-car garage in there. There's exactly like what's over at the other place, and because we're only building on one side of the road, you're also going to have street parking on the other side that's not going to have any houses or anything going on over there either.
So, it's a full 20 feet?
Yes.
From the... Does that include the curb, or is that driveway only?
Be from the property line.
So, would that include the curb?
It would not include the curb.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's, what, 24, 25, 26 feet somewhere in there?
Well, ideally without crossing over into the curb. And you talk about workforce housing, and so they joke that I always bring up this whole issue associated with long trucks. Workforce?
Right.
You end up with long trucks.
Three-quarters, one tons, and...
And some of those neighborhoods where the truck ends up hanging over the sidewalk, that's what I'm always trying to push and avoid. It's my own personal issue.
And Chad, I would hope that if those were the case, that's what lends itself so nice to this footprint. On the other side of the road, there's no driveways, no curbs. A big old truck can park right over there.
Gotcha.
And I thought of that, really, when we were thinking about all these things. It's like, okay, how do we make this work? And how do I make that corner, knowing that I might have an apartment complex? I'm going to have 192 units.
Okay. So, on... Well, talking about a different corner, you're... Sharon, you might pull up the plat, too, that actually has drawings. Those skinny, skinny little lots, those are the two-story... Those are the two stories. Your other lots, like number 13 and 14 up there, that's where it becomes more of a traditional townhome.
The diagonal lots that start out skinny and go wide.
Around the corner there?
Well, let's start with the skinny ones. The skinny ones are, those are the two-story with the balcony out to the...
Yes, those are still the two-story. Those are coming around there.
And... Yes.
So, those are... That's all one sixplex. The side lots are huge for what we did for distance, and like I said, we may put a third bedroom on there if it renders itself to be able to fit for a third bedroom. But it was the best way we could use the space, and people are going to get a huge backyard for a townhome. They're going to have some serious space, because it's off the curb that I got to do the 10 feet.
Gotcha.
And so, to make the pie, I mean, they're going to... It's going to be a win for somebody to pick up all that land.
Right. Okay, thank you. Stick around, because you never know who's going to have an additional question. But I'm going to throw a question at Ryan. Ryan, do we have access for sewer for those neighboring lots associated with the south? Now that we're bringing sewer this far? Those other lots have got sewer also? Yes?
Definitely. So, there are four existing parcels bordering Miami Road on the south side, three... Two that are built out, and there are eight-foot private utility easements that line up pretty close... As close to the existing parcel lines on the south side with the planned parcel lines on the north. So, there's two individual eight-foot utility... Private utility easements that would allow those existing homes access to sewer to the north on Oregon Street if they so needed in the future.
Great. Thank you, Ryan. I'm good. David?
Yeah, I've got one. I just got to pull up my map here so I can see where we're at. Okay, so, right now, Oregon Street dead-ends into a cul-de-sac, right? At least, that's what Google Maps says. So, I just want to like... The temporary cul-de-sac on here, it, you know, it's outlined, it's showing it on the plat, but if there's no intention to build outlot number one, and I guess this is more for staff, but will that temporary cul-de-sac be required to be put in as development comes around, as we extend Oregon Road around, so that emergency vehicles can turn around, well, people that live there can turn around, too?
That's correct. The Fire Department for Access will require that cul-de-sac. It's specified on the civil plans as a minimum 12-inch road-based section to allow a full weather service for a fire engine emergency service vehicle to make a full...
Good. Thanks, Ryan. I don't have any other questions. You guys got any questions for Mr. McCall? No? Okay. Thanks, Dean.
Thank you.
All right. At this point, we'll open up this agenda item to public comment. Either of you? All right. So, come on up. I'm not going to read my whole spiel, but basically, we'll put a timer up here, maybe. If not, we'll keep time. Do we have time?
Can I share this with the council, please?
Yep. Please bring... If you've got stuff, pass it around. Please do.
This is just a clearness of where our existing subdivision is, and what Dean poses law issues.
All right. Here, you guys want to pass that down? Hey, ma'am, would you state your name and address when you get to the podium, please?
My name is Mary Tarr. I'm seven of the existing residents in the subdivision. I moved here from Texas and saw the opportunity in this really nice little subdivision for retirement people. I moved here myself, not in Montrose, but in this area, and have found that... And one of the reasons I bought was because ninety-seven percent of our residents are over 65. So, our neighborhood is very quiet. There's plenty of room for people to walk and get their exercises, and it's really a quality type of life. In my seven units, I have two well-known people from Montrose that have moved into my rental houses, Mrs. Peterson of Peterson Electric, and Mrs. Turner of Turner Automotive. And the reason they moved into it is because it's close to their business... Their family businesses, it's close to their family, and they love the idea that they can get out and walk, and they can easily back their car out of the garage without a large amount of traffic. We're sort of back in a small nook that really, there's no traffic, except for if you get out on the Hillcrest of Miami. So, I'm very concerned, because in the past, when zoning was done for this property, there was probably no really planning going on when this was first zoned. I'm not blaming the existing council, but I think that we were here last year to protest the property owner from California, the developer that was going to put these, I hear, 192 units, I believe, and I may be wrong, I need to clarify that, I thought he was limited to 80. So, it's confusing to me that Dean is saying 192, and I thought we had limited to two stories and 80 units. So, now I'm back here again protesting someone that did our development, someone whom I know personally, and he has says multiple times, he's going to keep our existing building plan as was, as is, existing. And then, now, we have this plan to add two stories, smaller houses, one-car garage, and then he wants to add it into the existing HOA. I feel, again, and I said this last year, and I'm going to say it again, no traffic study has done. I'm not talking about going out and counting cars and getting a traffic study that way. I mean, do a proposal of what your traffic is going to be with all the factors that you know that's going to be built in that subdivision. Oregon is a really narrow street. It's really not a two-way street. So, you potentially could have approximately 50 cars a day going in and out, plus the ones that are already there, early in the morning and late at night, or coming home from work. And I just am concerned of first getting on Miami or getting on Hillcrest, because there's no stoplights, and it's very fast traffic, and it's an issue. It's an issue that I'm very concerned about, and there needs to be no planning with the city on this traffic issue.
Mary, I'm sorry, your time's up. You've got one last statement I'll let you make.
Well, I just... You know, we did not receive notice from this... About this hearing until this last week. We are going to have our annual meeting the 16th of October, and we'll bring this up for discussion and voting for the association. Please take a solid consideration. I'd like to give our elderly people a quality of life, and we do get that right now in the current subdivision. Thank you.
Anyone else? Ma'am? No? Okay. All right. In that case, we will close public comment. Bring it back up here. You guys, any other commentary, questions for staff or the applicant? Would you like to bring the applicant back up, Chad?
Yeah, you're reading my mind.
Dave, if you wouldn't mind coming back up. State your name and address again, please.
237 Elk Mountain Drive, Redstone, Colorado.
So, speaking further... Digging further into Mary's comment about quality of life. And this is a subject that, even though Mary didn't bring up, it's still a quality of life issue that I want to at least bring up. That did come up at our last set of condos that were before us, an issue that came up from that neighborhood. What is... This is all managed by an HOA?
Yeah, it's all managed by an HOA, and we've still got to work through. I mean, there may be a vote that they don't want to include this in the HOA. There may be a line drawn to where these smaller units would be carved out and created a different HOA. I mean, I can't speak for what the end result for that. I'm open and flexible for everything through this. My intent is to try to continue what we created to go on around the corner the best I can without getting myself too exposed and meet these goals that I shared with you all, or sell it. And if I sell it, Alexis is going to be knocking on the door, and he's going to take that land, and he's going to take the whole thing right around the corner. I can just see it happening.
So, here's the point, and here was the subject that was brought up at the last meeting with the last... Dealing with some condos, dealing with the quality of life issue, and that was the short-term mental subject. So, the proposal from that other neighborhood was to increase the quality of life, to prevent from within the HOA, prevent short-term rentals within the condos within the neighborhood, while it's under your control and under your development of that HOA, for something for you to think about. It has nothing to do with the process here, but I just bring up...
I'm trying to make sure I understand. So, you're talking about like Airbnbs, and that's what you're talking about?
Yeah. So, it's all within your control. It has nothing to do with my vote today. I just say it'll impress your neighbors, your prior customers, and the rest of the neighborhood, thinking about some quality of life.
I agree.
So that they don't have to deal with short-term Airbnb within their neighborhood. So, that's... I just wanted to drop that idea for you, and that's all. I'll take up your time.
Thank you.
Is it possible... Shoot, I'm sorry. Is it possible to bring up Google Earth or Google Maps up on the screen?
And just for Mary, I can also speak to the 192 if you want.
Can you throw the satellite image on so you can see that? There. Okay. So, Dean, those first... In the plat that we're actually talking about tonight, those first, I think it was three on the top, four on the bottom, or vice versa? We're basically saying, taking another one of these units and replicating it on the top and bottom, or north and south of Oregon, is that what...
So...
The way it's currently platted out, space-wise?
If you look on the east side, so let's do the southeast corner, that is a triplex of the current design. The next one over is a duplex, same footprint. That will go into the northeast corner, two of them. That's where you're going to get four. That triplex will go literally right next door to that triplex that's in the southeast corner, and then as we start making the turn around the bend, where you can see that I'm losing the ability to build on both sides of the road, that's where it goes into the sixplexes like over there. And then, like I said, I wrap around and come into where I can't... I can't build one of those and believe in my heart that if somebody knows that high-density is going to go right next door, that I'm going to sell it for 550 or something when I get to it. I just... It's not a risk I want to take. And, I mean, it's probably easier for me just to sell the land to Alexis, but I don't want to do that to what I created with Seasons, and I think we have a wonderful product there.
And if so... I'm just... I'm counting real quick. So, if we're doing sixplexes, there's going to be three buildings?
Three sixplexes, yes.
Three sixplexes, okay.
One right on the corner, and then right on up the side there.
And then either side.
And then that outlot, depending on how those do, we would change the plans based off of community need in response to that.
Okay.
But I was willing to gamble to say that 18 homes coming on under $400,000 would seem like a fair thing that we could try to commit to, to meet some of those needs.
Okay.
But I didn't want to do it all.
All right. Do you guys have any other questions for Dean? No? Any other questions for staff? Thanks.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff?
Yeah, I do. What is the width of Oregon Street? And that looks like that's fairly new, so that is probably about 50 feet. Isn't that what code is?
Yeah.
Oh, I missed that. Oh, I missed that. So that's a pretty wide street, that's what every other, so you could park two cars on both sides and still get a fire engine down the middle of it, that is, that is a fairly wide, that's what my, my street is, 50 feet, that's a wide.
Mary, I'm sorry, public comment's closed, so, sorry.
CCRs prohibit that.
Yep.
That's what, that's why I thought maybe it was made much smaller than code was, okay. I didn't see that, thank you.
Ah, shoot, I forgot what I was gonna ask now. Dang it. Uh, anybody else got anything for staff while I'm thinking about what I was gonna ask? No? Okay. Um, shoot, I really can't figure what it was.
Would you like for me to clarify that width of road and right-of-way?
Well, I'd like you to clarify, and this is for Mary, and then Mary, afterwards, if you're not satisfied with Ryan's answer, by all means, hound him after the meeting. The, sorry, Ryan throwing you under the bus on day one. For traffic studies, when, when we have a development, doesn't matter whether it's for this many homes or, you know, 10 times as many, because those developments could take five years, or they could take 25 years to develop, those traffic studies take into account the full build-out of the development, what's being asked for. So if it's 20 units, it's, you know, whatever, if it's 120 units, it's different. Because I know it's something Scott brings up all the time, so.
That's correct. So it's the full build-out of this proposal, whether he does it in phases, splits this up into phases, but it's, it's the full build-out of this proposal, and we ask, our threshold is a 250 vehicle per day before a formal traffic study is performed. We still ask for a stamped letter from a Colorado professional engineer of certifying what the projected traffic volume is, and in this, for this proposal, the traffic engineer that evaluated this development is projecting 180 vehicles per day for this development, with a peak hour of about 12 vehicles per hour for this development. So it did not, so with that number, it does not cross over our formal code-required traffic analysis, or traffic, formal traffic study at only 180 vehicles per day.
Okay, and then one other thing that often comes up is the fact that, you know, there's potentially another development right down the road, there, we know there's developments down Miami, and again, just something that we usually try to bring up for people that may or may not know, is that there are traffic studies that also include those build-outs as they hit the larger feeder roads and affect traffic down Hillcrest or Miami as well. Because it's, I mean, this, this development is fairly, you know, relatively small compared to some of the ones we've seen recently that are further away, and those other projects are actually gonna impact, you know, this, the traffic circle area here.
That, that's correct. So, just because this subdivision, or yeah, this development is not triggering that 200 vehicles per day, that means that we're not seeing a traffic analysis for this particular impact at these particular intersections. If this build-out is however included in the larger traffic analysis that are projected for the more global region, so a sugar pine or a brook that is occurring further to the east is including the density, the projected density of this area in those larger traffic analyses.
Okay, thank you. Anything else, guys? No?
So, she mentioned that she only had one week notice about meeting today, that's normal, that's city code or that's what we normally do?
Yes, per city code, we place a publisher notice in the newspaper, we send letters to all property owners within 300 feet, and we post a sign and all that is done 15 days prior to the meeting.
And was done for this one, then?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else, guys? Any other discussion required? No? Okay. Well, in that case, I would entertain a motion of some kind.
I hereby make a motion to recommend the city council approval of the preliminary
plat application with following conditions. The approval of this preliminary plat is expressly conditioned upon city staff ensuring that all policies, regulations, ordinances, municipal code provisions are met, and that the applicant adequately addresses all the staff's concerns prior to the execution of the final plat. City staff is not authorized but is approved to execute the final plat prior to all conditions being satisfied. The request meets the code criteria and based on the evidence and testimony presented at this hearing and in the staff report.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Thank you. Any discussion about the motion as presented? No? Okay. All right, in that case, all those in favor? All right? All those opposed? Okay, motion passes unanimously. All right. Agenda item number two.
So, second tonight, this is a CUP application for a proposed travel home park at 1702 East Main Street, which is the Red Arrow Inn and Suites. The property is zone B2 Highway Commercial District. In B2, RV parks or travel home parks are considered a conditional use. One little quirk with these uses, they actually require both a conditional use permit and a travel home park permit. These are separate things, the conditional use permit, which we're talking about tonight, is a permit that considers and allows the use of a travel home or RV park. The applicant has provided some preliminary plans for what it might look like, but at this point, fully designed and engineered plans are not required. They will need to come back with travel home park permit application with some, some more details later, and the plans that are shown tonight might change should the CUP be approved, just keep that in mind. Any CUP does have these review criteria that must be met. The applicant has provided responses to these criteria, which I will read from, so these are the applicant's words. An RV park is not contrary to the public health, safety, or welfare, the use is supported by surrounding right-of-way and existing utilities. If the CUP is approved, the project will go through a full civil design process and review with the city of Montrose to ensure that all city standards are met. The site is zone B2 and has been used as a motel for years. An RV park in this area is supported by the future land use map of the comp plan, which designates this area as general commercial. The general commercial land use designation prioritizes auto-oriented development. Additionally, the comp plan designates this as growth area one, prioritizing infill development due to the presence of existing infrastructure and utilities. The property has front end on Highway 50, which is built to accommodate all forms of transportation. An RV park is compatible with existing uses in the area, as there is an RV park directly to the south and other motels and restaurants adjacent to the property, which have served traveling visitors and residents alike for years. The use will not have adverse effects on other property values. The project will be designed and built to the existing standards and requirements of the city of Montrose Land Use Code. Each RV space will have the ability to accommodate at least one vehicle. RV spaces have been designed with adequate length to accommodate a full-length RV in tow. The existing access for the motel will be used for the RV park standard camping, and RV park quiet hours will be afforded at the property. Auto-oriented development dominates this area, making an RV park an appropriate use that will fit in with the surrounding properties. The clubhouse is, is an existing structure on the property that's been historically used by the motel, and landscaping in the common play areas and dog park will be well-maintained by ownership to serve patrons of the RV park. This is the site plan they provided to us, as I mentioned, this is not necessarily the final plan, as they'll need to go further into depth for the design of the park. This is a general concept, just to give you an idea where it would lie in the property and how it would be accessed, et cetera. And then this is a sample RV space that they provided, these are also in a packet as well as a narrative that the applicant provided. Staff does find that the CUP meets the requirements in Section 1176, it's in compliance with zoning and compatible with existing uses in the area. Staff recommends approval of the Red Arrow RV Park Conditional Use Permit. And with that, we have the applicant here.
Good evening, Planning Commission, my name's Ty Johnson, I'm with Miss Planning and Design. My address is 4525 Row, Grand Junction. I just want to introduce myself as the owner's representative for this application, make myself available for any questions you all may have, and just reiterate that, you know, this is a conditional use permit application. The concept plan you see is very conceptual in nature, that is what we want to try and achieve, but of course, when we get into civil design in earnest, things likely will change a little bit, and we will need to go through a travel home park permit application and, and show that we can meet all city standards. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions you all may have.
I have a question, what would be the longest that they can stay on site?
You know, honestly, we haven't got, we haven't got that too deep into detail, I believe it might need to be less than two weeks though, per code. So, I don't know if that's, if that's correct or not, but there's oftentimes requirements in code that prohibit long-term stay. So if that were the case, obviously, we would need to comply with that. If that's not in code, as we kind of go through the design and the owner starts to get into business planning, that, that's when kind of that would be revealed.
And Will, do you know if it's in the code?
I'd have to look that up, I don't remember off the top of my head, but we could certainly look that up.
In order to be considered a short-term rental, it has to be under 30 days.
Okay.
And I don't know, Ty, give us a second, actually, before we go into whether conditionally we, excuse me, we think an RV park works here, can you talk more about the actual, what are the requirements for RV parks and what, like, what the city will do with this application, if it goes forward?
Yeah, I could pull-
I kind of want to know what we're getting into as far as what the, what does the city code require for RV parks, before we bother tying with a bunch of questions that-
Yeah, so I could pull it up.
He may not know that you know.
Yeah, I could pull it up, just keep in mind that that'll all be reviewed during, assuming this is, if it is approved, that'll all be reviewed when there is a travel home park permit in front of us. That's not specifically what's in front of us right now, so that's not the criteria we're looking at, but I can pull it up.
And I'll say while, while Will is pulling it up, I did consult the, the travel home regulations through this conceptual design process, so it was considered in terms of open space requirement, you know, there's like a minimum lot size, I think, for the, how you dimension off RV pad. I think there's some setbacks that we considered, dry vial is something we strongly incorporated. So, so these were considered as part of the conceptual design, but I'll let, you know, Will kind of go through it, and then also to his point, we will have to actually get into design in earnest if approved.
And Will, can you confirm, or I guess, yes or no, that after a conditional use permit is either, well, if it was to be approved, the permit process for actually making it then a RV park, does that come back before us at all, or is that just a staff administrative?
It goes back to Planning Commission and the city council. In theory, they could come at the same time, and we did discuss that, but the applicant decided, and then we staff agreed, that it made more sense to seek a conditional use permit first, so that the applicant would at least know that they have the ability to put an RV park there, and then come back before you with more, you know, fully engineered and then designed plans for you to see.
Okay, well, in that case, I think that probably helps all of us, as far as we don't need to know how it's gonna work yet, because we're gonna get a chance to look at it. Right? So it's either, are we, are we okay with an RV park being there? If the answer's yes, then yes, and if no, no, but if it's yes, we don't need to sit here and ask about the landscaping, right?
So I'm wondering where the demand came from? So the idea obviously probably came from some of your travelers with demand for that, or what was the thought process? That's just me being curious.
Yeah, no, that's a great question. I'm probably not the best person suited to answer that question, because I'm not the owner, I'm kind of the planning help specialist behind everything. But yeah, I have worked with this client in Grand Junction, and he, kind of his business model is to buy hotel properties and to, to kind of bring them back to life, remodel them and repurpose them if, you know, there's other opportunities on the site to accommodate, you know, tourism-related business. So he felt like he had a good candidate in this one, and he targeted this property specifically because of that large yard that's to the south and saw an opportunity for an RV park.
How I look at this RV park, because I'm a big RV-er, I mean, I go all over the place for RVing, this is more like to get to Terst in the Montrose. So they come in the Montrose, instead of staying in a motel, they're gonna park their RV here, and it's smaller, so this is gonna be, they're gonna park it there, and they're gonna go someplace else during the day, come back in the evening, go out the next day, come back the next day. It's not where they're gonna sit there and just party all day long, like a lot of RV parks do, you know, because the spots are smaller than a normal RV park, but I can tell. That RV park next door has closed, it's not there anymore, it's closed for a while, and that had much bigger spots, and I don't think-
The one that had the mini golf course or whatever?
Yeah, exactly, right by Ted's. So in my view of this, this would be nothing but complimentary to Montrose.
Anybody else, sorry, does anybody else have questions for Ty? Let him sit down. Go ahead, Chad.
I've got a question.
What is the planning associated with fencing around the property?
Again, haven't quite got to that level of detail yet, but in all likelihood, they would pursue a boundary fence.
And William, tell me, in my opinion, my memory, this is the best time, if we're ever gonna put a condition associated with this permit, use permit, this is the best time to put a condition onto the property. Yes?
Yes.
And so I would float to the, to my, my other planning commissioners, that the one thing that I'm not liking about this particular location is the very, very close proximity to the neighbor, immediately to, oh boy, I'm trying to figure out the direction, that would be the southwest, and literally his house is, measuring on the GPS, or not GPS, but GIS mapping, we're talking less than, around 20 feet. So, to be blunt, my only recommendation for a condition would be a solid sort of fence. Some people, some RV-ers show up at, you know, 2:00 in the afternoon, others show up at 2:00 in the morning.
Sure.
And whatever we can do to block out can help that resident, since this is now impeding into the residential environment, that there be a solid material fence on that particular boundary line to create some quality of life and health and safety for that person who's living there.
Yeah, so I've, I've been to that property, and that fence is low and see-through, so it's not gonna do, you're gonna see every RV that's there. I don't know about the, where the tree line there, no idea. Will, what's the, does the city have standards for what a privacy fence is, or what the fence needs to be between properties? Does it have to be a six-foot fence, does it have to be an eight-foot fence, like what, does the city have any requirements for that?
There's no minimum fence height requirements, there are maximum fence height requirements, those are usually handled through our building department, so I hate to put Sharon on the spot when I might need to here. I believe in the rear, it's eight feet maximum, eight feet maximum in the rear, in the rear of the property, so, just being in the rear of the Red Arrow motel property, it could be a maximum of eight feet.
And my concern is back to the headlights, 2:00 in the morning.
Oh, I don't agree with you.
And so I'm not trying to create this big border, we're not trying to create a Trump wall, no, unintended, or, you know, no politics intended.
I've never been to an RV park that allows people to come in at 2:00 in the morning. I've never been to one.
I've been the RV-er who showed up.
And I have been to hundreds of them, so.
Again, I'm that bad guy who does show up at 2:00 in the morning, and I scream at the kids, "Don't you dare make a sound." And we don't level, we just get in the camp and go to sleep.
That's a rarity, and I don't believe building an eight-foot fence-
No, I agree, I'm talking about a six-foot solid fence.
Is the answer to that, it's the rules that they put up. I mean, if anything, they're gonna have to register with the office when they pull in.
So, the other scenario is, the other campground, I could care less about. That's, that's, they are a campground, it's only because it's a residence that's, I think there's a quality of life issue compared to, there's already a campground next door, and maybe they're not operational, but that would be my request and desire as a condition if the rest of my fellow commissioners were on board with it. Any heartburn or thoughts?
No, not at all, I mean, I think we'd be absolutely fine with that condition, in all likelihood, the owner's gonna want to pursue that anyway, so I don't see any issue with that being a formal condition or not.
I think, I think the opposite, if you're a RV-er, you know, do you want that guy in that house to see you and your family as well, right? Like, you would want it if you were there as well, on either side, so, but there's, I see nothing wrong with putting it in there.
Will we talk about the residents before I open my mouth? I have no idea whether there's any residents along here. I've never been back in there.
Yeah, so there's, there's residents all along the, I don't know if you guys can bring it up on, on Google Maps, but there's residents all along the southwest edge, and I believe this is a residence here too, on the south. So that, that dry grass is the RV park, like, space, and so that, where the tree line is run, and all that green grass, that's all residences there.
So I see one house, two houses, and an old RV park that's closed up, I don't see a lot of houses.
No, it's just, it's just those two property owners and the RV, the old RV park. All right, any other questions for Ty? Before I move it on to the public comment, that there won't be any, since there's no one else here. Ty, have a seat for, for now.
Thank you, Ty.
All right, so let's open this up for public comment, and then we'll close for public comment, because there's nobody here. Okay, now we can get back to discussing. Sorry, guys, formalities. I believe that the city admin process and like the requirements of this being an RV park would probably take care of the privacy issues and the fence issues, but I, I personally see where Chad's coming from, and I, I don't think putting a thing in there that, hey, you need to address the fence issue as part of the conditional use permit is not out of the bounds of... That being said, those property owners aren't here.
Nope.
And, you know, who's to say that the developer puts a fence there because we told them they had to, and then that person doesn't like the fact they've got a fence that they have to look at now?
And they can pick their own terms to put their own terms.
Oh, that's a good point.
Yeah.
That's actually a very reasonable point.
Yeah.
But then again, yeah, yeah, yeah.
You know, I have neighbors that I don't want to see, it's my choice if I put a fence see through.
And, and, and worst, worst case, I mean, the ability to, to put an RV park here is what is before us, if we don't like the design when it comes back with, for the actual permit, we can say, hey, you know, we don't like this.
And we can't put a fence in then?
Are we really ever gonna see that level of detail?
Don't know.
Yeah.
Don't know.
I, I think the major point to me is that they're not here. If they were worried about it, they got a letter, they got a notice, they would be here if they were worried about it.
You know, that's a very, very honest, yeah, reasonable comment.
And a solution to what I did when I don't like the neighbors behind us, we came together and split 50/50 on a fence. That can always happen.
Um, I mean, what do you think, Chad?
They didn't like me, it might be.
Can you put it in, like, the possibility of a fence, or like, that conversation needs to happen?
I think, I think what, what I would do is, Ty, I would impress upon you, back to- to the property owner, that they should reach out to the two neighbors there and figure that out before the permit comes back up here.
Sure.
That's all. And that way, at least we get, hey, we talked to our neighbors, and neighbors agree they don't want a fence, and we don't want a fence, so, or whatever.
That was a good point.
Yeah, it is. I agree.
And I understand your point, they're not here in the first place.
Yeah, I'll just second that point taken, but I think we always sometimes have difficulty in interpreting that well-being sort of safety of the community clause. And I think if you don't anchor that in something, which is usually some facts presented by either the city or the public, then we, then we're pretty far afield with that, you know, if you don't anchor that in something that's brought up during the season.
I'll, I'll leave it alone, unless, again, whoever gave the motion wants to still put it in there, but I'll leave it alone as a non-issue.
I think it needs to be brought up when they come back to us. That, to me, is one chicken.
I think those clear that we don't, right now, there is ability to make this a requirement, but we don't really, it appears that at a later stage, we will have, we may have the ability to mention that to them as courtesy, but we won't have the ability to make it a requirement.
Yep.
I have a clarification from the city, though. I think you said this, but I just wanted to clarify. This is tied to the travel mobile home park with thirty-day limits on the stay. So that's correct, just to reiterate between Will and?
Well, for short-term stay, thirty days is the limit.
And a short-term stay, though, is what? Because we have a travel home park, and then you're saying short-term stay.
Correct.
So that's what applies to a travel home.
So that I would have to look into a little bit more, because it doesn't say anything about the thirty-day stay within the travel home permit. However, in order to be a short-term stay under the code, that's under a different section, it would be thirty days.
But it is my understanding that that's for residential. That is for residential overall in Colorado. If a rental is less than thirty days, it's short-term, and it's defined as long-term after thirty-one days. Well, at thirty-one days.
As to Colorado, I'm assuming, yes. As to the city of Montrose, which is going to be separate, thirty days is that?
But for residential, not for travel trailers?
Uh, it doesn't have to be residential. I mean, it could be, you know, your, your standard hotel.
Okay. Okay, great.
Yeah.
What, what is River View RV Park, then? Is that in Montrose, over there by Chapeau Lake?
I, I'm sorry?
Yes.
It is, because I know they have, they, you can rent a spot for a year there if you wanted to stay there.
They may do long-term stays. Again, I, I'm just delineating between long-term and short-term. I don't know if the code actually states that you cannot do long-term stay or you only, you know, you only have to do short-term stay if, in fact, this is a travel home permit or park.
I did, admittedly, very quickly, but I did look through the code. I, I don't see any limitation on, in terms of length of stay for a travel home park.
A lot of parks only go two weeks. You satisfied?
Just insofar as we are trying to understand what the impact on the surrounding community would be, the length, the sort of length it's being there in terms of, the length they say seems to be helpful for that, but.
As far as the length, like, does it matter whether you've got one RV there for six months or six RVs there for one month, right? Unless we are associating some kind of connotation to someone that's going to stay there longer, in which case, I believe the city code would make sure that it doesn't become a, you know, a nuisance, right?
Yeah, the trouble with long-term is they turn into junks. People stay there, yeah, and, and.
But that's where, I mean, obviously, the property owner doesn't want that, because they're running a hotel, and so that should take care of itself.
Yeah.
But, um, yeah, I don't, I'm not, not too concerned about the length of stay part of it. I think that'll handle itself. Any guys? Well, entertain motion.
I hereby make a motion to approve the request to allow a conditional use of a travel home park within the B2 Highway Commercial District located at seventeen oh-two East Main Street. The request, period. The request meets the code criteria based on the evidence and testimony presented at this hearing and as outlined in the staff report.
Do I have a second?
Okay.
All right. Discussion about? Sorry, discussion about the motion? No? No? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Ty.
Thank you.
Yep. Other business staff?
I don't think we have any.
Okay. You got stuff I got to sign?
Yes, okay. After the, after adjourned.
I, I will, I'll hang out for that. Uh, cool. In that case, guys, meeting next time? William?
We'll get back to you.
Okay. Fair enough. Uh.
Can we have the alternate, three alternates?
Oh, yeah. Any, yeah, any, any idea on the alternance that applied? Has that, have they gone before city council?
They've done the city council work session interview, one person, one applicant. The appointment is going to be considered at next week's city council meeting on Tuesday. We'll see what happens.
Okay, awesome.
Is it one or three applicants?
One.
Oh, I thought, I thought there were three. I thought there were three, too.
No, there was one planning commission applicant and two historic preservation commission applicants.
Oh. All right. In that case, guys, if there's nothing else, I'll entertain motion to adjourn. All right, second? Thanks, Staphine. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Awesome. Meeting's adjourned. All right. I can still make the sock tracks.